We'd like to call the meeting to order. If you would stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing. It's to hear from residents for the request from Lori Thomas for a private road variance for the property located at 5521 Bonterre. And I'm going to declare the public hearing open at 7:01. So if residents would like to speak in regards to this request, now is the time to do it. Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. You can, yeah.
This is regard to a variance request for a private road ordinance. So I'm just going to read what I wrote, if you don't mind.
Could you just give your name, please?
Oh, it's Lori Thomas.
Thank you.
Dear Township Board, Article 11 Private Ordinance Number 97-174, Section 4729, Private Road Design Standards outlines the requirements and specifications for a private road in township. It has been proposed by the township that the private road Bonterre Drive in Ypsilanti does not meet the requirements of the private road ordinance, specifically the private road design standards. The private road design standards outline the requirements for all private roads serving one, four lots or less, or two, five lots or more with one acre or greater. The 10 parcels on Bonterre are listed for you. There are 10 total parcels on Bonterre Drive, all greater than one acre. Thus, the township has stated that the private road ordinance, private road design standards of five acres or lots or more applies to Bonterre and is a private road serving five lots or more, which would mean that all 10 parcel lots would have been required to bring the road Bonterre Drive up to the minimum standard set forth by the township or obtained variances under Section 4733 before building permits could be issued. Of these 10 parcels, six had homes built on them. The remaining four parcels are vacant. Unfortunately, the township did not enforce the requirements of 97-174, but allowed some of the parcel owners to obtain building permits without bringing the private road Bonterre Drive up to the minimum standard set forth by the township or obtaining a variance. It appears from looking at historical records that this issue was first brought to the attention of the township in 1988 as a land division issue. It is also worth noting that the original plot plan for all 10 parcels is on record at the Environmental Health Office dated 1988. Due to the township allowing in error any homes to be built on Bonterre before the road met the minimum standards, and for letting some homes to be built without variances and on others to receive variances and still others to be denied, has road resulted in a great injustice and great economic harm to the remaining parcel owners with vacant land. If the township would have upheld the ordinance at the time, the cost of bringing the road up to the minimum standards would have borne by all 10 parcel owners, as they could have built their homes and benefited for the last 35 years. During which time, the parcels became in existence. As opposed to the township arbitrarily and precipitously allowing some to build and not others, I love to emphasize that these vacant parcels were held by the original landowners for over 30 years, the landowners waiting for township approval to build and have made to pay R1 residential property taxes for 35 years. This has enrolled in over 35 years of lost equity and enjoyment of their land ownership. Please note that of the 10 parcels where six were allowed to build, at least two were allowed to build after others had already received a denial for a variance, with the township citing Private Road Ordinance Number 97-174. The last house built on Bonterre Drive was in 2014, 2015 by the original owner Bradley Casino, which is part of the original split two outlined below, and sold to Bradley Casino by Lon Contract in 1988 by Kenneth Casino. The land contract is on record with the township. Due to township adhering to the ordinance only in retrospect and only to the remaining four parcel owners going so far as add to the legal description of record of the township and the tax rule in 2020, unbuildable due to Private Road Ordinance 97-174, and then changing it to no building allowed due to Private Road Ordinance in 2022, the township has effect made the four remaining parcels not only unbuildable but unsellable. It is also worth noting that the parcels have been zoned R1 residential and have been taxed as R1 residential. Tanya Cole, the Building Inspection and Environmental Health Administrative Supervisor, has confirmed that the buildings themselves, the parcels themselves, are buildable as far as the building inspection environmental health is concerned, this is as a sewer in the water. Under Private Road Ordinance 97-174, Section 4734, adopted 12161997, nonconforming situations, it means or reads that private roads legally constructed prior to adoption of this article may continue in use subject to the following: No such road should be enlarged, but I'll go to the point number three, lots lawfully created prior to the adoption of this article, which are assessed by a nonconforming private road, be used in accordance with the requirements of zoning ordinance. In 1988, Kenneth and Patricia Casino brought the original 49 acres of land with intent to divide the land after purchased to family and friends listed above, who had all agreed to advance to the agreement. Kenneth Cozen, after purchasing the 49 acres, did in fact immediately divide the land four times per the requirements of the Subdivision Control Act, and sold the six parcels created by Split Two Land Contract on record with the township. At this point, Kenneth Casino had no remaining splits under the Land Division Act of 1997 and amended. I have the splits outlined for you, so you can look at that. January 31, 1983, the Honorable William J. Prince of Circuit Court Judge for Washtenaw County entered a consent judgment of partition. That was in 1993, so the parcels were already in effect. The consent judgment of partition and newly created deeds were registered that same year. These documents are on record with the township. All six parties received their respective rights, titles, and interests of land September 5, 1988. In a letter on record of the township dated January 20, 1994, Department of Commerce Richard E. Lomax of Subdivision Control Unit, County Zoning Review Unit, wrote in to Eugene T. Hannan Balkos in Hanlon Law Office with C.T. to William Douglas Winters, Attorney General Opinion, "These divisions provide the vindies under Lon Track and equitable interest in the land. The date of the land contract is the date of the division." All 10 parcels were in fact lawfully created prior to the adoption of the article. They're accessed by a nonconforming private road and are allied by Private Road Ordinance Number 91-174, Section 4734, "Nonconforming situations to be in use with accordance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance," which has zoned the parcels as R1 residential. Please let this letter serve as my written withdrawal from a variance request from Private Road Ordinance Number 97-174. It has to be heard at the township meeting tonight. Since it does not apply to the parcels on Bonterre Drive, it is a lawfully constructed nonconforming private road. In closing, there is currently an application for review for a building permit to build a home in one of the four remaining vacant parcels, 5521 Bonterre Drive, and the township is asked to assist in any confusion that may arise due to the Private Road Ordinance Number 97-174 being applied to Bonterre Drive in error in the past. In addition, the township is asked to correct the legal description of record of the township and the tax rule and remove no building allowed due to Private Road Ordinance 97-174 as soon as possible to allow the remaining parcel owners the rights you have afforded the other parcel owners, so they are able to finally build their homes or sell their parcels and expedite the issuance of the building permit for 5521 Bonterre. Do you have any questions for me?
This is a public hearing, so people are giving their public comment.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Okay.
Are there any other public comments on this?
So what exactly is she trying to get a variance on? Is it not paving the road, or is it not making any of the other improvements, or is it that and being allowed to build there? Because it sounds to me like you need to do all the improvements, then you can build. Is that what the issue hand is?
If you could give your name for the record. I'm sorry, the person who types the minutes isn't in the meeting.
My name is Colin Boyd. I live on Bonterre.
Okay. And the request is from the Private Road Ordinance?
Yes.
Which paving is one of the requirements, yeah.
So the variance is to get out of making the improvements to the road that would allow building, that would remove the issue?
I think so. That's one of them.
And is it just paving the road that, because we got a letter, but it didn't say anything other than trying to get a variance on this large section? So is that what it is?
So in the public notice that was sent out to all the residents, it just said that there was a variance request, and the thing that you're specifically talking about is what my understanding of the variance request would be, is to not pave the road.
And there's nothing else, just the road paving part?
That's my understanding of what the variance request was.
And so when the properties then would go, if you get the variance, then the properties could be built on, the remaining four are all buildable, where does, in the future, where does the split come in? Like, how many properties can be split out of those 10? Is there any stop to the variances that would be allowed at that point if we start changing how everything is now listed as far as the use of the properties?
So I would just defer to our attorney to answer that question.
Actually, I'm not sure what she's asking for, because in her letter that I was trying to follow, she said that she was now withdrawing her request for a variance, so I'm not sure what she's asking for. It sounds like she wants a building permit to be issued, even though she submitted a variance request. So this is something that's going to have to be reviewed in much greater detail than at a public hearing, because she asked for a public hearing on a variance, and then I'm reading, well, you're withdrawing your request for a variance, correct?
It's not really.
Well, I mean, but you are withdrawing your request for a variance.
Yes.
So at this point in time, I can't really answer your question, because it doesn't appear there's going to be a variance for me to review to begin with. So at this time, I try to go to the chair and forget more public comments.
So if there's any other people who would like to make public comments, we got your questions, and then we understand them. Right now, people are just making public comments on the request for a variance.
Hello, my name is Danielle DeSano Smith, and I reside at 5489 Bonterre. We purchased after everything. We are not one of the original homeowners, although we've been there 22 years. And I just want to speak to the road itself on Bonterre and how I am very concerned about any more activity on that road right now. We've had several experiences of contacting police or fire, and they have a very difficult time getting down there. So I just want to speak to the fact that it's there for a good reason, and I think that that is something to consider.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other public comments?
I'm Joshua Cowan. The request for the variance was for the substrate to be, that was the one variance that we would like, that we were previously requesting, that was the issue. But under, after looking deeper into it, it's actually not under, it doesn't fall into you. The slots were already split prior to 1993. The Private Road Ordinance was adapted after the splits were already made. It was already registered with the county, and then now they're saying that they're not honoring pretty much the rights of the landowners. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Are you a resident on Bonterre or Deer Creek?
I do own a parcel of Bonterre.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments?
Madam Chair, just for the record, I did speak with two residents that called in about the private road variance letters that they were given, and neither of them were opposed. And I've also received a letter from Alan Guest, and he resides at 5537 Bonterre, and I will just read his comments into the record. Hello, other, I'm the property owner with the address of 5537, which is adjacent to 5521 Bonterre. I would like to say I support her request for the private road variance. I feel that this property is unique and that there are only a small number of parcels sharing the road. The requirement for this road would be unnecessarily burdensome to her. Granting her this variance would do justice for her and the other property owners. It was not her fault that the original developer of the property did not do the road in total compliance with the ordinance. Her desire to build a home would not cause an adverse impact on the other properties in the vicinity. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions on my comments, and I appreciate your care and consideration of the above. Take care. Alan Guest.
There was one resident that contacted me today, and Tanya Burke from Deer Creek, and they were the fifth house on Deer Creek, and Karen Lovejoy will remember this, and she had to actually pave all of Deer Creek. So one person paved a private road, and she said that if it is granted, just consideration be given to the maintenance of Deer Creek as well, since that's how you enter in order to get onto Bonterre. And I said I'd give that into the record. So I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:16. Thank you. The next agenda item is a consent agenda, and it's a minutes of the December 20, 2022 work session. Did I forget public comment? Number four is public comments. Each person can speak three minutes. You give your name, and just say if you're a township resident, you don't have to give your address. And you can also speak on each agenda item as well.
Hi, I'm Ted Weiser, a township resident, and no particular agenda item. I'm just excited about the future of the township right now. I just wanted to say a few words about that. Seems to me this is just a real exciting time for Ypsilanti Township, and a great time for whoever selected to join the board tonight to help us lead in some fresh new directions that we may not have thought much about before. I still think it's sinking in for most of us what kinds of brand-new opportunities are beginning to become available to municipalities like our township due to the literally hundreds of billions, with a B, of new dollars from historic new laws that Congress passed last year, if we're ready to work together to take advantage of them. I mean, think about it, nothing like this since LBJ was president. And the first worker-friendly state legislature in Lansing in many years will be much more open to what local communities like ours really need to thrive, again, if we're one of the communities that's prepared and united enough to win those new dollars and resources. And finally, I'd like to point to what I see as our secret weapon, the one that, one that I'm the first to admit we haven't taken nearly enough advantage of in the past, and that's the surprising emergence of thousands of our friends and neighbors and family who haven't always voted, but who decided to come out and take some responsibility for their community in this recent election, especially people of color, younger people, women of all ages, new voters in many cases. So let's not miss the chance to provide creative opportunities for them when they look around and say, okay, I voted, what should I do now? Because I happen to think that, in fact, the only way we really seriously take full advantage of these new opportunities that are becoming available to us is if we do a better and better job of bringing more and more of our neighbors into feeling they belong, that this is their township too, and if we're smart enough, we can sometimes follow their lead as we all move forward together in these uncertain times. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Are there other public comments?
Hi, I'll go. My name is Haley Brown. I am not a township resident, but I'm a resident of Washtenaw County. I think most of you are familiar with me as I'm a field rep with Congresswoman Debbie Dingell's office, really just stopping by to say hello as we start the new year. Like I said, many of you are already familiar, we're kind of already in contact, but just kind of here to say hello, but also feel free to reach out anytime, we're always available. So that's really it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Carissa Collins Watson. You know, I was sitting here listening to Ted when he talked about the new things and opportunities that we have. And my, I am disappointed and opposed to the way things have been handled, even with the board. And I think that we, as a people, we are the community, and it's upsetting to know that before you made decisions, only one person makes a decision or a recommendation. And I think we, the community, should be able to come out, those people should have spoken, you had names that you wanted to appoint. And I think that, for me, I think everybody up there is great on their job, don't get me wrong, but seeing that we had to replace one, I think that there's others that should have an opportunity to even speak. And I think one person shouldn't have to be the one that make a recommendation, and it's done. We, as the community, we voted you all in, and you as a team, of course collectively, you make a decision, but at least you would give the rest of the community that has put in a chance to even speak or do. So I think that it's upsetting that we, as a community, have to see our board up there, and nobody gets to speak but one person, and it's done. That's wrong. We voted you in, you should have had enough to allow someone else to talk or to speak so we could see where they are too. So that's what I have to say, and I just want the community to see, this is the board we picked, one person get to say something, and it's done. That's unfair.
Thank you, Carissa.
Thank you, Carissa. My name is Rodrick Casey. I am Ypsilanti Township Democratic Delegate and been for it for almost 20 years, been elected seven times, and I have also applied for this seat on the board, and I agree with Carissa 100%. And as a delegate, I am running for this seat today. I understand it's a recommendation, not an appointment. And so I'd like to also express that I would like to be on this board, I applied, and I'm not going to say too much else about myself, because I was always taught to let someone else speak for you. And I'd like to read out a couple of these recommendations. One is from Michigan Supreme Court Justice Bridget McCormick, all right, who's just retired from the bench and started moving on, hopefully to the United States Supreme Court. To whom it may concern, I am writing to express my strong support for Rod Casey candidacy for open trustee board seat. I have known Rod for over 10 years and have seen his work personally on my successful campaign for the Michigan Supreme Court. Rod is committed and better than his community in environmental education, house safety, resource, and equity. He is a very hard worker, a collaborator, and excellent listener. He can be trusted to get hard things done and never need credit for them. I enthusiastically support Rod Casey for this position. Please feel free to contact me if I can answer any question. Sincerely, Bridget McCormick. To whom it may concern, all right, this letter is recommendation for Rod Casey as he is applying for the open trustee position on your board. Rod and I first met in 2003, and we worked together on several community projects, and I found Rod to be very dedicated and diligent in the work that he did. Later on, 2012, Rod and I began working together, RERock. We co-chaired a ban the box felony boxes from job application committee during that time. I got to know Rod even better and learned he had a heart for what is right and never give up spirit. We were successful in getting several municipalities to remove the boxes due to the rise of conscious efforts. Shortly after that time, Rod found PACJ, an organization working within the community towards justice for all. Rod was able to bring Judge Tim Connet and now Judge Irene Washington into the group that produced several successful community events. Having a heart for justice, Rod was able to get the Washtenaw County Dems to submit a resolution he authored closing private prison in Michigan to the Dems who presented it to the state legislator. Senator Irwin later introduced to be a dear other justice issue that Rod has worked on also, and would continue to see them through. Rod has been a hard-working delegate for over several terms now. As a delegate, he has a heart to people who has worked consciously for his constituent. He would do the same as Ypsilanti Township trustee. Rod is a kind-hearted human who wants to serve his career. He deserved the opportunity to sit on the township trustee board. He would learn a team player working on behalf of the resident. You won't be sorry appointing him. He would be a tremendous asset. Sincerely, Lois Allen Richard, former mayor of Ypsilanti. And finally, I have a letter from Mark Dr. Cook from Hope Clinic. I have known Rod Casey for a number, you're considered it an honor to be able to write the recommendation on his behalf. And considering Rod for your board, note that he is highly regarded in our community. He has been instrumental in producing funds for the improvement in local neighborhood, increasing safety for our senior citizens. He's a tireless worker and has led many campaigns for the citizens about important issues directly for quality of life for all. Rodrick has a team accomplice who have touched all parts of Ypsilanti beneficial information and explained the detail to those interested. And accepting Rod as a board member, you will not only be a knowledgeable individual, but a man who can formulate ideas and put them into action to make them work as planned. In short, Rodrick Casey is a hard-working, highly qualified individual with a great deal of knowledge and experience who would be splendid addition to your board. These are some, just some of the recommendations. I still got a couple more I haven't read, but I don't have enough time to. But as a delegate, I ask you to please consider me. As a trustee, I have been and helped many of you on your campaigns, and I ask that, how long do I have to wait to be able to move up? How long? Because I have served you as well as the public, and I'm ready to serve them on a more effective level. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Are there any other public comment?
Hello, I'm Gigi Jones, and I'm a county resident. I also just wanted to, I didn't have anything written up, but I was recommending Bianca Tyson because of the work she does in the community and part of Women on the Move, and she's part of our group and has been instrumental in the community, working with us. And with her background, MBA, and her tax sense, and her just great personal skills that she brings to our community, I was recommending her because she has a love for our community. She's been here her whole life, and as much as she's been working with all of us, it's impressed me so much with her and the community.
Thank you, Gigi.
Good evening. My name is Gary Turner. I'm a resident of the city of Ypsilanti, and I wanted to speak to the agenda item for Ms. Lori Thomas at 5521 Bonterre Drive. And just add that, it's my understanding that there is a commercial trash collection service that operates on that road without any issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Good evening, board. I am Ricky Jefferson. I do reside in Ypsilanti Township, born and raised in Ypsilanti, former county commissioner and former city councilperson. Just wanted to say thank you for all the support that was given to me as I went through with you, a lot of events and a lot of projects for the township. You know, we got things done with assessments and things like that, things that we used to help people remove rats from their homes and those type of things. We also had some times where we made sure that money got and work and resources got to the township to help build, renew the US 12 and also I-94. Just wanted to say thank you for that, and it's also a precedent that was set as I was a board member of the commission that has helped 48197, 198. We passed an ordinance- We passed an ordinance called the Equity Ordinance in 2018. And since that time, the push for that ordinance is to find different ways to distribute funds other than those groups who were coming to us with data that was saying that they were working with people but had no significant impact on their lives, such as graduation, finding employment, finding homes. So we did push that to the point to where now the requirements for those dollars are changed to you have to deal with racism, trauma, and poverty. And you have to have a staff and your board which is diverse. There were some who were continually receiving funds in the past that had over two years of instruction from the Office of OCED to look at how they could transition their boards and their staff to make them more diverse. They didn't. So historically, what happened is more grassroots organizations who are nonprofits in 48197, 198, who work with people and live with people that they're going to work with, received dollars. And most of them were dollars of significance amounts, hundreds of thousands. And those organizations had never received that kind of money before or had never received that type of money before. And the real historical part of that is there was more African-American nonprofits giving dollars than ever before in this county. So I wanted to thank you for your support.
And Ricky, we want to thank you for everything that you did for our community during COVID. A lot of people didn't know this, but we would meet and he would give us boxes of masks and test kits to hand out in order to get them out in our community. And then we went door to door actually delivering them because we were waiting for our allotment of masks and test kits. You worked very, very hard for our community and I appreciate, you know, personally and professionally, everything that you did for our residents as well.
I was a candidate, or I am a candidate, for the trustee township position. However, I know that there has been a recommendation already, but I just wanted to kind of introduce myself to the public. Again, I'm Bianca Tyson. I'm a lifelong Ypsilanti and I've been here my whole life, went to Eastern Michigan University, graduated from Ipsy Public Schools, went on to get my MBA at Wash College, but with a background in finance. And just, you know, building relationships throughout the years of living in Ypsilanti, it just gives me an urge to want to serve the community and be an advocate for my people and the people of the community. So really, I just want to introduce myself. I plan on being more involved than I already am and remember my name.
Thank you. Julie?
Bill Sincool, Planning Commission Chair for Ypsilanti Township, lifelong Ypsilanti Township resident, nine years on Planning Commission now, 16 years out at Webster Township, which is in Dexter. All aspects of local government, I'm the property assessor out there in Webster Township, along with budget, payroll, accounts payable. So all aspects of local government. Went to Ypsilanti High School, went to Eastern Michigan University with Bianca. Been around the area for a long time, attended the board meetings since around the summer in July. I believe that I had 21 or 22 letters of recommendation that were submitted to the clerk for the position. Would just like to introduce myself. Once again, Bill Sincool. Thank you.
Sorry, are there any other comments? My mic was off, I'm sorry. All right, we will move on with the agenda. Number five is the consent agenda, which are minutes of the December 20th, 2022 work session, closed session, and regular meeting, statements and checks, and the treasures report for December of 2022. So move. Motion, Row.
Support Peterson.
Support Peterson. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Attorney's report, Mr. Winner?
It was given during the work session, unless you want to hear it again?
Well, Galt Village update, is it good?
Galt Village, okay. The township has been in court for the last probably 10, 12 years in regards to the Galt Village Shopping Center. Many people here probably remember like I do back when Galt Village was a very thriving shopping center, one of our first shopping centers. I think Karen Littlejoy out there in the audience used to work there at Grant's, one of those, trying to be a waitress. Anyways, it was a nice local retail neighborhood shopping center. Then, as many of you may also recall, the Expressway exit from 94 to Grove Road was closed off. And at that point, there became kind of a downward spiral, so to speak, in regards to Galt Village. Galt Village has had different owners over the last number of two decades. Some of the second and third generation owners did very little to maintain the property. It fell into disrepair. It's actually been at times utilized now, up until litigation, we would go through there, there'd be trash dumped in the back of the shopping center. We had active drug activity taking place, like an open bazaar at times. I'd go through one day and there's prostitution occurring. So it's been a very, very sad decline from what it once, from what it used to be. But at the same time, the township continues to receive a lot of, I don't want to say complaints, a lot of concerns, not only from the neighboring residents, but from the township as a whole, because you can see Galt Village, if you're going down the Expressway, if you're going down the Service Drive, it's a very, very, it's about 17 to 19 acre parcel. So the township has been in court during the last, actively the last four or five years with a new owner and has prepared hundreds of violations. It's reached the point where it's been passed from now to the third judge because other two judges have retired during this time period. And we have a order of demolition that will allow the township to demolish a Galt Village. We don't own the property, but we will have the right to demolish those buildings as well as to put a monetary lien on the property to ensure the township is made whole once the property is redeveloped. We do believe that by proceeding with the demolition, we're taking down a public nuisance. We have concerns with people that are living inside the building. We have concerns with what's going on over there in the evening. It's very, very dark, you can't really see what's going on over there. And so at this point in time, the township has hired the appropriate experts to prepare a specification for bidding so as to allow the demolition contractors to present bids that will be considered by the court on June, I'm sorry, January 27th, after which the township board will be in a position to accept a recommendation from the expert in regards to who is the most qualified bidder to proceed with the demolition. At this point in time, we would like to, nothing better than to see Galt Village redeveloped. We think it can be. We do know at the same time that we have some degree of say-so in regards to make it, well, we have the responsibility to make sure that property is not an eyesore and that it does not create any more of a negative impact than it already has upon the neighborhood. And so it's our hope and goal that come spring of this year, this property will be demolished and will be in a better posture to be redeveloped by someone who actually can actually have the vision, as many of us have, that this can still be a very, very strong local neighborhood commercial location. Many of you may remember at one time, there was an AMP store there, and there was also, I think, a Farmer Jack store there, and Kmart was there at one time. So it's got a lot of rooftops in the area that would support the local neighborhood stores. So that's our, that's our main focus right now, is making sure that that building is demolished. The township is also, the township does own property on Whittaker Road over here. We own approximately 30-some acres. You may have seen the, that used to be a Bozell factory over there. They sold out to a company called Underground Printing and they relocated their printing t-shirts, sweatshirts, et cetera. They moved from Sio Township over to Ipsy Township and they are, have told the township officials that they are constantly trying to hire local people as much as possible because they have found that when they hire local people, that their absenteeism rate is much lower because people live much closer to where they work and that makes sense. I bring that up because that is property that we own. The township just recently negotiated a sale of 2.53 acres of a property that we also, that we own to Aldi's Incorporated, they're going to build an Aldi store. It's their intent to open by Thanksgiving. At the same time, I think the supervisor has already requested of the township board that the proceeds from those sales be leveraged so as to have those reinvested in some of the older neighborhood commercial corridors that could use a facelift. We have a lot of older neighborhoods, commercial areas in the township, whether it's Ecorse Road, Michigan Avenue, Holmes Road over there in the area where I grew up. And so we want to try and leverage our funds and be able to, at the same time, provide as much choices to people in terms of shopping, at the same time, to leverage those funds in a very, very wise and prudent manner. And then just for the benefit of those people that might use, the township's community center, which was the old Foster School, because I actually went there many years ago, Karen may have gone there too, I think. So, but anyways, we actually had a frozen water pipe that broke during the coldest week of December, when everybody was freezing during the Christmas holiday break. And so we've, it's been, if you've ever hit a water break in your house, you know how much water can be dumped in a matter of minutes, much less an hour. In this case, the water ran for four days because it occurred during the holidays. And so we're actively right now trying to make sure we keep as much of the community center open as we possibly can, given the fact that it is a very, very catastrophic insurance claim and that a portion of that school that was used for the dance studio actually has the original hardwood floors. And we're going to do what we can to try and salvage that flooring and if not, repurpose it for something else. But that's just kind of a little bit of a glimpse of some of the things that have happened in the first two weeks of January. So we expect an awful lot of good things to continue during the 2023, 2024 year.
Thank you, Attorney Winner. Any comments regarding? The next item is Old Business. It's a second reading of Resolution 2022-23, which is Ordinance 2022-502, an Ordinance, Amending Ordinance 74 for a parcel number K113220055 from its current R2, which is one-family, single district zoning classification to R2, which is one-family residential district zoning classification with an agricultural overlay. The first reading was held at the December 6, 2022, regular meeting. Clark, Row?
I have Resolution 2022-23 in reference to Ordinance 2022-502, rezoning of 6400 Merritt Road, parcel number is K11-32-200-055. The following resolution was offered by the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Planning Department and supported by the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Planning Commission. Whereas Ronald Eversol requested the rezoning of approximately 7.9 acres located at 6400 Merritt Road from R2, one-family residential to R2, one-family residential with an agricultural overlay. And whereas at its regularly scheduled meeting held on October 25th, 2022, the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Planning Commission recommended that the township board approve the rezoning request pursuant to MCL 125.3202 for a certain parcel of property compromising 7.9 acres, commonly referred, identified as 6400 Merritt Road. Parcel number K11-32-200-055 from the R2, one-family residential zoning district to the R2, one-family residential zoning district with an agricultural overlay. And whereas the purpose of the rezoning is to develop the property for the primary purpose of agriculture, the applicant would like to establish an orchard and vineyard and use not to allow, allowed with the existing R2 rezoning. If approved, the rezoning would apply the agricultural overlay to this property and would permit the use of the property for orchard and vineyard uses. And whereas the rezoning request is consistent with the township's current master plan, and whereas the Township Board of Trustees agrees that the rezoning is appropriate, and now therefore be resolved, the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board hereby adopts and incorporates by reference Ordinance number 20, or 2022-502 attached hereto by reference in its entirety. I would so move the resolution.
Motion, Row, support Swanson? Motion, Row, support Swanson to approve. This is a rezoning, is a petitioner, he's down here. This is a second reading, so we have to do a roll call vote because it's actually a rezoning and a change of our ordinance. Eldridge?
Yes.
Stumbo votes yes. Row?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
The second reading is approved. Under New Business, we have a request to approve Ryan Hunter to fill the vacancy for township trustee with the term ending November 20th, 2024.
Sorry, let me just get there. All right, I received memorandum from Brendan Stumbo, Township Supervisor dated January 11th, 2023, a recommendation of Ryan Hunter to fill the vacancy for the township trustee created by the resignation of Jimmy Wilson Jr. with term ending November 20th, 2024. It states, "First and foremost, I want to thank all of the applicants who expressed interest in serving on the township board. The clerk's office received 17 letters of interest from residents seeking appointments to fill the vacancy created by trustee Jimmy Wilson, whose resignation became effective December 20th, 2022. After his resignation was accepted on December 20th, the vacancy was posted the next day on our website with a deadline of January 6th at 4:30 PM. Each one of the residents that submitted for the appointment have unique working experiences, education, and commitment to the community, and we are thankful for their interests in serving and would encourage them to stay involved with Ypsilanti Township and our community. My recommendation for appointment of Ryan Hunter as township trustee is based in part on his work history as a field staff representative to Congresswoman Dingle. He has firsthand experience and knowledge of constituent services and currently works for the Jewish Family Services, connecting people in need with services. Ryan was appointed by the Ypsilanti Township Board of Trustees to serve as our representative on the AAATA Board. As our township representative, Ryan has been a strong advocate to ensure our township residents receive their fair share of transportation services as well as upgrading existing bus stops and shelters, as well as the construction of new shelters for our residents who rely extensively on bus transportation. Attached is Ryan's, Hunter's letter seeking appointment and resume. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment. I would so move to appoint Ryan Hunter as trustee."
We have a motion and support to appoint Ryan Hunter. Discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just, I'll go briefly because I said this in the Just I'll go briefly because I said this in the work session earlier. I'll be voting no tonight, not because Ryan, I don't think you're a good candidate. In fact, I think you're probably a very good candidate. My concern is, I just felt we should have been more inclusive in having the applicants have the opportunity to come out and speak before us tonight for a couple of minutes so we could get to know them. I received an email from Bianca. I received an email earlier today from Bianca, which is the first correspondence I've ever had. It's the first time I've met you. I think all of us up here are trying to do the right thing. I have no doubt about that. And we all probably come with our own thoughts on who we believe a candidate should be. I certainly had one as well. But out of the list of eighteen names I received, I only knew a small handful. I've only met a small handful of those folks. So I was hopeful and requested that we put those resumes and those letters of recommendation in our board packet. The trustees have them, the board and the full-time officials had them, but I thought it was important that the community saw them as well, so that we could show the quality of people that want to be members of this board and just be transparent in everything that we do. So again, not that this gentleman's not a good candidate. I think he's a fine candidate. I've sat with you in many meetings. I just would have liked to seen the process done a little differently. I, in fact, myself was an appointee in 2004. And when I was appointed, there were a number of candidates, more than ten. We each were given a couple of minutes at the mic, and the process was open for any board member to recommend any candidate, and then there was a vote taken. Roughly ten years ago, we had a second candidate that was appointed. We did interviews that time. As I said in the work session, I'm not sure a full interview was the best process, especially with eighteen people in the short timeframe we have to make a decision. But we did again have those interviews, and we allowed any board member to make a recommendation, and then we moved forward from there. We now have a recommendation in front of us with a second, and I have no doubt that Mr. Hunter will be appointed. And every board member sitting up here, including myself, will do everything to make sure you're successful, and whatever we can do to help, we will. I'm just voting no out of principle. I thought the process should have been a little different. That's all.
Any other comments from the public? You can also speak on this at this time as well. You're welcome to speak.
Yes, Rodrick Case, Ypsilanti Township Delegate. I think this, if possible, this should be adjourned and rediscussed over to allow the public to participate just as well, just as our trustee just explained, because a lot of people is not kind of too inclined the way it's done right now, that is being picked without giving people the opportunity to introduce themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Are there any other comments from residents?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We do have a motion on. Oh, someone's coming to the floor.
E L Weathers, 2219 Shelley. I totally agree. I think that when outside people that don't live in this community, it's trying to influence the community, it's a bad signal. And you can go down quick. It's something to think about. Thank you.
I do want to say that my recollection of Mr. Eldridge being appointed is a little bit different. And in the past, this is our fourth appointment. And three, Stan Eldridge is one, Scott Martin was one, and the third one was Larry Doe. And we brought a recommendation to the board, and we voted on it. This time, and just to tell you the history of what we've done in the past, we've also recently appointed park commission members. And we didn't advertise like we did this time and open it up. And I'm going to be honest, I'm really glad that we did because it gave us all the opportunity to see how many people are interested in serving our community, and a variety of people from a variety of areas in the township with different experiences. And we can only recommend one. And that's what I'm doing this evening. And it's not, I mean, it's not an easy thing to do. You take it very seriously when you do it. In the past, the three full-time officials, we would get together, and we made a recommendation. This time, trustee Wilson handed out a document from Michigan Township Association that said, "Any deliberation towards narrowing a list of candidates must occur in public." So we didn't have any conversations like we normally did in the past. And Karen Rowe is here, and like, that's what we did. We would sit down and just discuss it and make a recommendation. So this time, we took, we opened it up for the first time, and it was a good process. And I'm glad, I'm really glad we did that. We do have a short time period to appoint people as well. So we accepted the resignation on the 20th, and took applications and interest until January 6. And this is a first meeting since then. I think we have until the end of January to make the appointment, or there will be an election. That's how the process is. So I know people are disappointed, and I do feel bad, especially people I know that have called me about a person I had not met before, but I didn't meet her this evening. I do feel very good about Ryan Hunter for the reasons stated. Ryan's at a A A A TA meeting, he represented Ypsilanti Township. When that big mileage was on the ballot from point seven oh to two point three eight, we were not against transportation, but we didn't want it to go up that much without more conversations. And when we entered into the regional authority, it was point seven. I never dreamed that they would come back and triple it. I just, I never dreamt. And Ryan represented us on that board. And John Newman and I went to the meeting. There was a lot of pressure on Ryan as a young man. And the way he handled it was just so wise, and I greatly respected him for doing that. Something else that we're trying to do in the township is connect people to resources. We hired a social worker at the township, and she is really working with people so they can navigate all of the resources. Because as Ricky knows, we can't get resources to the people. You have to fill out a form. You have to, there's too many barriers. So last year, this board decided that we want to help the community by doing this. Ryan Hunter works for Jewish Family Services, transportation, housing, seniors. I didn't realize everything that they did till I went to one of their meetings. And they really are working. And that's why of all the candidates, I felt like recommending Ryan Hunter was good for the community. And that's, I just wanted to let you know why I made that recommendation. So I'm sorry for the ones that are, you know, offended or hurt. I would never do that to anyone. It was not my intention to do that. So I hope everyone stays involved. I sent emails to everyone. I want them to stay involved. And because that's a future, right? That's how I see you guys, as a future of the community.
Madam Chair, may I speak? Madam Chair, may I speak?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I would like to let you know, acknowledge that we, as in ReRock, got the bus system out here first, passed the, helped get the money passed for it, helped get buses over there on the northwest side of Ypsilanti Township. So we did the same thing. And I'd like to let you know, as an individual, I wrote a resolution that recently President Biden released at $5 billion for substance abuse and mental illness, which is a big issue in our community. And we are continuing to bring this bill. So you, I would suggest that you adjourn this and look over the rest of our records before you make that decision tonight. As Mr. Weathers just said, Ryan is not even from this community. Okay? And we need people that's been in this community and can experience this community. Okay? I have fought hard to inform this community and to help this community from HIV to all the way to prisoners. Recently, I just got through talking to the prisoner because they were mistreating one of our resident's son, who was in there for life, and they moved him to a mental illness room finally. So these are the kind of things your delegates are doing and not being recognized for. So I would humbly ask you and the board to reconsider this tonight and do the same thing trustee Elwich talked about. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dale Summerhill, Ypsilanti Township. Ypsilanti County. My issue is, it appears that it was done in the dark. That's the appearance. And as far as what people in 48197, 48198 have gone through for the last three years for sure with COVID and disproportionate inequities, elections have consequences. And as far as openness, could it have been open? Yes, it could have. And so that's all the people are asking for is do not continue to do things in the dark when it's an open and fair process. We all have a right to, you know, vote on this, to let, you know, time to let you know how we feel. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Madam Chair?
No, Rod, please, you spoke three times.
All right.
There's other people, hon.
Good evening. I'm a county resident. My name is Karen DeRoe. And I'd like to say, after hearing the things that I've heard, and that's wonderful that you speak so highly of Ryan, but just as others have said, they are, there are other people that have served this community and served it very well with very limited resources. But there are also seniors that can't reach, they don't know how to work their computers. They don't get these emails and these leaflets and the things that you say that you reached out, and that they may know Ms. Young Tyson here and know of her work and may want to speak about her work, or they may not be able to get here to one of these meetings that I happened to hear about just this Saturday. So that means I didn't even hear about it, and I didn't get a chance to speak. Now that I am, I want to say that's wonderful that you get the firsthand and other recommendations from higher ups that are not living down here where we are on the ground floor, where we are not getting a lot of the resources, where the food banks are not reaching a lot of people. And I know because I put a lot of those boxes in my van that sit right out in that parking lot right now and delivered them myself. So to say that this person has these wonderful accolades, so does so does this young lady, so does this other candidate here. But it's not fair to say, oh, well, you know, too bad you didn't hear about it, but we got to hurry up and make a decision by the end of January. So why don't you all get a county party or something going where these people can come out and talk about themselves, say what it is they have done, speak about these things. So if anything at all, have a meetup at the library or wherever, but so that everybody gets a chance. I'm an African American woman, and I'm going to tell you, as much as you say the Jewish community knows this and has done that, and they've spread the love everywhere, some of those pockets where those lower income people live, they don't get it. As much as it's offered, like you said, there are barriers. There are forms to fill out. And every time you get that form, they get a, we'll wait, you can come back, we'll see what the other organizations can do. And then they get that lift. Just like the gentleman talked about, the bus service, it didn't used to be bus service over there by Liberty Square where I used to live a long time ago, about twenty years ago, when my car broke down. And then all of a sudden, when I leave that community, there's bus service, people that wanted jobs. And everywhere you look, there's a job or help wanted sign in Ann Arbor, but Ypsilantians can't get there. No jobs in Ypsilanti for them. And what do their teens do? No, like somebody mentioned, when Lyndon Johnson was around, when Cita Jobs were around for teenagers. So if you want some of these problems solved, talk to some of these people here that are down here with the teens that are having the problems. They're angry because they don't have jobs. Talk to them. Ask them what's going on. Hire them. Those people that have done those things that they've done, that you say they've done, for the areas they've done them in. Now it's time for these people over here to do something about what's going on around here, down here, where you don't hear anything. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Latisha Sharp, and I'm a Ypsilanti Township resident. I am a long-term resident, worked for Washington County for many years, very familiar with the board and familiar with a lot of folks in this room. I do not know Ryan, and I just met Bianca tonight and Bill. I do know Rodrick, and I knew a lot of those names responding to your article that was in the MLive with the eighteen candidates, I believe, that petitioned to be part of the board. My question tonight is that whoever you select for that seat, they will be representing this township. They'll be representing me and everyone in this room. So I just ask that you choose someone that can be a fair representation of that person. My question also is, I hear people saying that it's just one vote, but I see more than one person up there. So I would like to know, is this, is this a decision that we heard clearly stands opposition, but is this a consensus of the rest of your board that you are selecting Mr. Ryan? Or is it just like, I guess I would like to hear the votes of the other members on the board, because they, they make up the board as well. So I would, I would like to know that. And then individually, I would like to hear individually. And then also, I should never gave me the mic. Look. Also, I know I heard somewhere that that the eighteen candidates had submitted resumes and cover letters, information, and that information was given again to each board member. And so did they look through those applications? And did they have other candidates that they may have selected or they thought was different? So I would just like to see, like, what did they do with that information? My background is in HR, and so I'm always interested in how processes come about. So I would just like to know, how did they come up with, or I mean, we know how, you spoke highly of Ryan, but I would like to know how they processed the other eighteen applicants, because we hold you all responsible, not just, not just, not just one person, although you're the supervisor. We hold the board responsible because we actually elect each one of you. So individually. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairwoman. May I suggest that you just put it on the ballot and let the people decide?
So we have a motion and support to fill the vacancy of the Township Trustee position with Ryan Hunter. And we'll do a roll call vote, just so everyone. Eldridge?
No.
Stumbo votes yes. Rowe?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
And Swanson?
Yes.
The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is
requests to approve U I S as a single source provider for phase two of the sluice gates upgrade at the hydro station in the amount of $26,995, and it is budgeted.
A move?
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a Resolution 2023-01, which is the Owner's Dam Safety Program. It's an annual resolution, a motion to approve?
I have a.
Yeah. Can we?
I have Resolution 2023-01, the Owner's Dam Safety Program, where is the Charter Township of Ypsilanti in Washoe County, Michigan, currently holding a license with the Federal Energy Regulation Commission to operate the Ford Lake Hydroelectric Project Number 5334, and where is the FERC requires the Charter Township of Ypsilanti to develop and implement, fund, and continue to support the ODSP per the.
You guys, please be quiet. You want, maybe, just do a motion. They're taking it. I'll just wait. Can we, can we just finish the resolution real quick? Real quick? We're almost done.
All right, Resolution 2023-01, where is the Charter Township of Ypsilanti in Washoe County, Michigan, currently holding a license with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to operate the Ford Lake Hydroelectric Project Number 5334, and where is the FERC requires the Charter Township of Ypsilanti to develop, implement, fund, and continue to support the ODSP per the FERC guideline for the project at such time that the Charter Township of Ypsilanti ownership or the project is no longer under the jurisdiction of FERC, and where is the ODSP document clearly defines the responsibility for the Charter Township of Ypsilanti and its employees and consultants, and where is the purpose of this resolution is not new to the Charter Township of Ypsilanti, but rather a rededication of dam safety and the responsibilities that come with owning the project, and where is by the action of the document, the Charter Township of Ypsilanti is showing its commitment to FERC to operate a safe project, prioritizing safety over any other goals, and now therefore be resolved that the Charter Township Board of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees acknowledges the owner dam safety program to maintain compliance with the FERC and define the role of the Charter Township of Ypsilanti related to the project. So move the resolution.
Motion Row?
Support.
Support Eldridge to approve Resolution 2023-01. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a request to approve the amendment to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Agreement for Lune Feather Park. So move.
Support Peterson.
Motion Row, support Peterson. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is a request to approve meeting dates for the Board of Review. So move.
Support Peterson.
Motion by Row, support by Peterson to set the Board of Review dates for the taxes appeal. They're March 7th, which is organizational meeting, and then public hearings on March 13th, 14th, and 15th. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under authorization and bids, we have the request to award the bid and approve the contract with Beckett and Raider for the Parks and Recreation Five-Year Master Plan project in the amount of $33,000, budgeted in line item 213-753-801000. So move.
Support Peterson.
We have a motion and support. Are they here?
They're not here. I can just speak a little bit to the, I was on the committee that interviewed for this project. This is a project that's required every five years for us to do. Beckett and Raider unanimously, our committee agreed that we wanted to work with them. They're the only person that bid that includes a statistically significant survey, which our committee found and felt that was really important. They also had some really exceptional examples of how they've worked with community and youth in the past, so we're really looking forward to working with them. Thank you for your consideration.
So we have a motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business? There is none. Board member updates? We gave it at the work session, and, but I forgot to say that I had lunch with Johnny Lawrence, and he is bringing the concert series back again this year to Ford Lake, so. And you should see the lineup. Oh, sorry. The Temptations, he thinks the Temptations. Okay. So.
Board members update? Madam Chair, I also would like to say I attended the Eastern MLK Day luncheon, very successful, a lot of young people, a lot of people in the community. Supervisor was there, John and Stan. So it was a great day for celebration for Martin Luther King. Thank you.
Hearing, any other updates? Hearing? Motion to adjourn, 8:15 by Eldridge, support by Row, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The meeting's adjourned at 8:15.